Let me sign this certificate of burial rise because I think it's mine. And we'll move on. Welcome to our state council meeting tonight. I would like to ask Chairman, Chairman, would you give us an invocation? That'd be okay. And Councilman Hudson, will you lead us in a place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. Okay, we'll move on to item one, approval of the agenda. I need to make a couple of changes on the agenda at this time. I'd like to table item nine, consideration to appoint the 2014 planning commission chairman.
So you want to table it or just pull it?
I want to, I'll present it next meeting.
So at this point, we'll just table?
We'll just table.
Okay.
Right, okay. And then item five, the minor subdivision. I'd like to read a statement about that one. Pursuant to section 10 dash three dash two, section D of the Washington City Code, I'm requesting remove the item 5A, consideration to approve a minor subdivision for the Dixie Montessori Academy Minor Subdivision. Located approximately 600 west and 100 north. Applicant Mike Glaser, the voyeur company. The applicant would ask that the planning commission rehear this issue with the understanding that they are the land use authority and not just a recommending body to the council. That's per this ordinance.
So we'll remove that from the agenda?
Yes.
And with that note, I'll move that we approve the agenda with, while we're removing item 5A.
Councilman Hudson, if I may, just before to, on the mayor's statement. So the motion will be to remove that from our agenda altogether. And the recommendation includes that, I guess, I heard language about the applicant's desire. Are we saying that we're, the motion will, that say we agree that the commission will rehear it? Or what's the, what's the real intent of that?
Is that working now? Does it make any difference?
Yeah.
No. So the, the reason that it's going to go back down because it clearly came as a recommendation at the planning, at the planning commission stage. And I think that it was really clear to everybody attending also that that was the intent that other motion was made. It was recommended for this, for this body as a final decision or the legislative body. And under our ordinance, it clearly isn't. The legislative body is clearly the planning commission on those. And it, I think somewhere along the line, there got kind of a mixture of how that was done. And the reality is, it should be, that should have been a decision made as opposed to a recommendation.
It'll go back as a legislative decision, not a recommendation.
Right. And we're just, again, it's trying just to be reloaded. What it's doing towards is, I mean, a lot of people are interested on both sides. We want to make it as fair as possible, just to reload the thing so that everybody can participate in a way that the planning commission would like and intend. And then their decision will be made clearly with the idea that whatever their decision is, is the decision, as opposed to just recommending it forward.
I guess I'm just still trying to think through the process of the fact that they made a decision, but it was based on a recommendation. Do you think that's sufficient to revoke that and say do it over again versus just simply saying that decision becomes final?
Yeah, and it, not only that, but in speaking with the planning commission, they were clearly under the impression that it was only as a recommending body on it. And, and just pros and cons both ways. From their perspective also, they couldn't say whether or not it would make a difference or not, whether that was, whether it'd make a difference or not on the vote. Clearly what they said is, here's a recommendation to the city council. And it's certainly a different, and there's a different process. There's a clearly a different process we have planning commissions when they get recommendations. Because they oftentimes will throw a lot of things in to make sure the city council may just be aware of things that they're, that they're concerned about. And the fact is, we don't know. Nobody really knows.
Yeah, I guess I'm just going through some mental gymnastics here. Because if they make a recommendation, you assume that they made their best recommendation based on all the facts and information provided at the time. And so I don't want to have a planning commission that says, well, we're recommending stuff, we're not really making the best decision at this point because you're in favor of you. So I'm hoping that's not what's transpired in the past and transpired in the future.
We hope, we hope that also. But having said that, it was clear to everyone, including on the agenda, what, and, and because of that also, there's, you have no time period in which if someone feels like there wasn't, you know, the, the type of justification that would come for that kind of a land use decision from which to appeal from because we didn't have a final, it was clearly a recommendation, not a final decision. So this just makes it so everybody can still come. They can, we're trying, going to send notices out the exact same way, invite the same, invite the same way. Planning commission will be able to address that in a way that they feel best for everyone.
Will the composition of the planning commission be the same when it gets reheared? Or is there going to be some changes?
Yes, right. You mean, you mean the exact number of people?
Well, the identity, the same people?
The same personnel.
Same personnel.
Yeah.
I don't know if we have changes in there.
They, from their perspective, they certainly wanted to try to have the same people. I think Councilman Hudson, they're all, they clearly want to have the same people. So we don't have variables to change anything. And, and from, and just to make it clear from the city council's perspective and the planning commission's perspective, that was a, you know, that was a trip, that was a trip up from the city staff's perspective, the city council or the planning commission or anybody that attended either way. But we just wanted to, that's the right way. It should have been there. Should have been at the final decision and reviewed that way.
Yeah, and I think we, I think we all agree that something, you know, all these land use decisions are important. We want to make certain the right decisions are made. So if we're in air, we want to do it correctly. And I think that's what we're trying to do at this point.
Yeah, and, and not that it should make a difference, but certainly from the perspective that a lot of our communities had some interest in it. That we didn't want to just somehow either explain away why it wasn't, you know, why it wasn't the final decision, or explain away why the city's council should get it. Not a procedure, that shouldn't have been done that way. We just want to, want to make it as right as we can, given what we have.
Any other questions on that?
Nope, my motion stands.
We have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second?
Aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen. Item two, announcements. Any announcements to be brought forth?
Mayor, maybe if I, I might, this actually probably should have come before our last council meeting, but I failed to do it. So I want to announce tonight, I see they were here. A, we had a couple of our Washington City employees from our IT department that participated in the Dixie College Code Camp about three, maybe a month ago, three weeks ago. Anyway, they took third place in the professional division, which, the Code Camp, basically, they came in and within 24 hours, they had to come up with an idea and had to program it as a marketable. It was kind of interesting to see, I slipped over on Saturday morning to see what they had done. And theirs was if you had forgot to put your garage door down as you left town, it would send you a notification on your cell phone, which you then could put a code in and send it back and via your cell phone, put your garage door back down. It's kind of an interesting concept. Anyway, they took third place in the professional division over there. So I wanted to recognize that. Oh, Steve's back there now. We had, and his other half in the very back. They were a little bloodshot, I'd come Saturday morning, but congratulations to that group. They represented our city very well in that.
Congratulations. Any other announcements? Okay, item three, declaration of abstentions and conflicts. Want to interject to City Manager Carter, would like to take a couple of minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. This is not how we normally do this, but because of the fact that we are just allowing the departments themselves to have their own, we're not having a citywide Christmas party. I wanted to just take a minute. And it is traditional at this time of the year that we recognize both the department of the year as well as an employee of the year. And how that works is, we do have a recognition committee that consists of employees. If you're here long enough in the city, you probably get the opportunity to sit on that recognition committee. They look at recognitions throughout the year. And then if you have been recognized throughout the year, then you're eligible to either be recognized as an employee of the year. And they make recommendations with respect to that. On Tuesday night, we did recognize our employee of the year with their Christmas party, and it was with the community center. Benjamin Ray was recognized as our employee of the year. Just has done a fantastic job with our aquatics program up there. And I think that was an exciting moment for him, very unexpected moment for him as well. And so tonight, I just wanted to just take a minute. I'm pretty sure, because I asked them to be here and they just know everything anyway, that they know why they're here. They, I've never had a group of, a department say, I need you to come to city council, and them not ask why. So that was the first giveaway that they just seemed to. Plus, what you need to understand about the IT department is they pretty much know everything that goes on with us and they know all of our passwords. So that always makes them just a scary, a scary group possibly. And it's not because of the Code Camp that we're recognizing them, but it's, it's a good example of why this year we're recognizing our informational tech, information technology and GIS department. Again, this is a group of individuals that are not too far away from us, whether we know it or not. And just so you know, our IT department oversees all the city's networks, computers, data storage, mapping, telephone systems, social media, and brand identity programs. They annually process hundreds of work orders with regards to any of those systems I just mentioned. They tell hundreds of thousands of people our story through our social media program. And they do, and they map our community with their GIS systems. And they do this all with just that staff of three that's here. And so if it's okay, Mayor, and I'll have you present this to them if you would, but Washington City would like to recognize Steve Whitaker, Kelly Carlson, Dale Simper from our informational technology and GIS department as our.
Be happy to.
See, they got dressed up for the occasion.
Well, you knew they knew it was coming. They brought the suit on.
They took off their World War crap.
Thanks, IT department. You guys do a fantastic job. Appreciate it.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Item four, consent agenda to approve the minutes for the city council meeting of 11:26, 12:10, and 12:11 in our board audit report. Any questions or comments on that?
If there's not, Mayor, I'll move that we approve the consent agenda's been read.
Motion and a second?
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Hudson, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
Turek, aye.
Thank you. Item six, final plats, consideration to approve the final plat for Coral Ridge Town Homes, Phase 3C, located approximately 4250 east, 2100 north. Applicant Henry Walker Homes.
Since the flood, this is the first time we're trying Apple TV. Hey! One more thing we found that worked. If I may comment for the IT department, they had collars and buttons on, so that is dressed up. That's pretty good for them. As stated, we're here for a final plat proposal. We're asking that the Coral Ridge Town Homes Phase 3C, this particular phase of the subdivision, is proposing 36 lots and that area of coverage is 3.7045 acres. This particular location, the Coral Ridge Town Home Development, is, is part of the Coral Canyon Development, which is the zoning carries a PCD with that. The amended preliminary plat for Coral Ridge Town Homes was approved back in May 8th, earlier of this year. That's when they changed a lot of the smaller homes to some bigger units, because those were selling a little bit better and just to give a little more variety there. Staff has reviews, reviewed the requested proposal and the proposed Phase 3C conforms to the approved amended preliminary plat. The planning commission reviewed the request at their December 4th meeting. And the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the final plat for Coral Ridge Town Homes Phase 3C to the city council, based on the findings and subject to the conditions, which are the five standard that we have for final plats. And I'll be glad to answer any questions the council might have on it.
So everything's the same from the preliminary?
It is. This is one of the reasons that they wanted to get here is a lot of these bigger units, you can see the, the smaller ones, they wanted to keep on the outside perimeter. Now, but these ones on the interior that you see in here are the bigger units, which I really like. They look a whole lot better, so very favorable to that.
There's no discussion. I'll make the motion that we approve the final plat for Coral Ridge Town Homes Phase 3C, located at approximately 4250 east, 2100 north.
Motion and a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second?
Councilman Turek, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
Hudson, aye.
Staley, aye.
Truman, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item B, approve amended final plat for the Bristol Park Town Homes Phase 2, located approximately 100 north, 1250 east. Applicant Chuck Spucker. For the record, Chuck called, he had an obligation to visit Hills High School basketball. He scored keeps the games.
Well, thanks, Mayor. As stated, the applicant is requesting an amended plat for Bristol Park Town Homes Phase 2. This particular amendment request is to change the footprint only, basically, of, of the units. A lot of them had single car garages and they found they were having a hard time selling the interior smaller units with the single car garage. As they looked at their plans, they were able to change the garage to a, a two car garage and not change too much of the floor plan and keep it pretty much in the same, almost the same footprint, other than just making a minor adjustment on the front end of, of some of those. The units basically are the ones that you can see that are more flat, like this particular, I can't point, but even if I zoom in, those, trying to read those numbers on there, but the next, I think it's 59, 60, 61, 63. That's kind of the new footprint. Some of these are already built, so the ones that aren't, you can see over on this end, those that have that straight edge are the new, the new proposed two car garage units and then up on the north end. So that's basically the change on this plat is just to change those to give them two car garage, make them more sellable. And they actually are a better looking unit with that. And then they'll be finished with this project. So that's why they came in, the adjustment, again, you can tell the difference between these units where you have the zigzag and then where the flat ones are is where the new proposed on those, those units come. So staff had no problem with this. The, the outsides are going to look the same. They'll match up with same colors. Tie, you know, the roof and all the finishes, the outside will pretty much be the same thing. They actually took a few units out over on this, this east side. You can see there's two fourplexes. That was one big 10plex. So it, it kind of helped, I think, break that up and give two fourplex units that are a little bit bigger. So staff had no problem with this proposal. Planning commission reviewed it at their December 4th meeting. They unanimously recommended approval of the amended final plat for the Bristol Park Town Homes Phase 2 with the conditions and the original findings and conditions of the original plat. So, except we did modify and add that number five because that, that is a new one since they're original, so.
On the, on that plat, the driveways up in the corners, are those, were those always like that? Were they shared and access?
Well, they, they kind of weren't because, you know, when it got back to these, where I was saying, these fourplexes were 10plexes, they were in a little bit and there was just a little bit of a gap of landscaping. Because of the double car, you know, going to the two car driveway, they wanted to make the driveways a little bigger. So it ended up just being, they're going to just do that all in concrete instead. It, you know, and in theory, you can probably take it one way or the other. It may not look as good, but yet it's probably the wiser thing to do instead of trying to have this V come in. And so I think it's actually the best thing when it's all said and done to end up having them look like that.
It's odd.
I've seen it done before in some of these when you get in that corner area, so. Because like I say, when they eliminated and made those ones bigger, they kind of pushed, you know, the ones that run north and south.
I guess there just has to be an understanding you don't park in your driveway there or something, right?
Well, they, I think they'll be able to get up and around, you know, on them and at least have one car there maybe. But with the two car garage and then maybe one in the driveway, but then we've had that discussion about nobody parks in their garage.
Well, I've driven through this area and there's a lot of people who park in their driveway.
Yeah. Especially because they have the single car garage.
Yeah, correct. I think that's part of the reason they're looking to do this, because they found a need for two cars in a garage.
Another thing is for me, that just puts a lot of cement in front of those units. But if you look at that, the other ones at least have a little bit of metal cement. Those ones just have a big swath of cement down there.
Yeah, and what hurts our view is looking straight down on it because we can see from above exactly, but when you're driving, street level, it kind of helps plain some of that out, just, you know, just put a little more perspective is that you don't notice as much when it's flat.
Never grows weeds.
Yeah, it seemed like.
Tell a crack.
That's true. And then you can never get that weed out in between that crack. No, no, we all pour, all the cement in Washington is non-crack cement.
If there's no more discussion, I'll motion that we approve the amended final plat for Bristol Park Town Homes Phase 2, located at approximately 100 north, 1250 east, based on staff review for the findings and conditions, including new condition five.
I'll second.
Motion and a second?
Councilman Turek, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
Hudson, aye.
Staley, aye.
Truman, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Those are both approved. Item seven, public hearings and related ordinances. Public hearing for consideration to approve a zone change, application Z-13-14, requesting to change the present zone from R16, single family residential minimum 6,000 square foot lots to R2, one and two family residential zone located approximately 456 North Main Street. Application Dawn and Barbara Johnson.
Sorry, Mayor, I'm trying to find my, it's not the greatest exhibit, but I may have to go back to Elmo and Tara because I don't think it got on here with that. Yeah, the Elmo took a lot of water. Well, so did this TV. It is amazing that they are both working, as well as these lights were full of water. So that's a good. Well, thank you, Mayor. As stated, this is application for the, a zone change of approximately .44 acres at the north end of Main Street before you get to the freeway overpasses. The request is from the current zoning, which is single family residential 6,000 square foot minimum, or we refer to as the R16, to a proposed one and two family residential, which is the R2 zoning designation. The R2 zoning district, just for your information, is either for one, two family dwelling unit or two single family dwelling units on a single lot. This particular applicant is going for the one, one unit with an over/under. The house currently has a full basement underneath it. And what their intent is, is to finish that out to a dwelling unit. They'll close off the stairs up them. I don't know if there's stairs on the inside, as I remember there's not. It's just a stairwell on the exterior already as they get into their basement. And so that's what their plan is, is kind of do an over/under, I guess, is what we did one here in the last year, year and a half, just a half block away from, from City Hall. And that's the intent on this particular proposal. The general planned land use map designation for this particular property is medium high density residential. That allows for density ratios of seven to 12 dwelling units per acre. The proposed zone change ratio would come in at a 4.55 due to the size of the lot and just having the two units, so it fits well within the dwelling units per acre. The surrounding zoning districts of this particular property are R16 to the northwest, east, and south. So it's surrounded by R16. Staff reviewed the proposal. It does fall within the general planned land use. This, for this, for this location fits within the density ratios. Also, just for your information, not too far from this, we approved recently the six plex townhomes at Lane Matthews. It's just around the corner in a little bit. So it's a little southeast of this particular property. The planning commission reviewed the request at their November 20th meeting. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of Z-13-14 for the zone change request from single family residential 6,000 square foot, or the R16, to the proposed two family, one and two family residential zoning, or the R2 designation to the city council, based on the findings in the report. I'll be glad to answer any questions the council might have.
Is this a case where there's already somebody renting the basement and we're just getting into compliance or?
No, from my understanding, the Johnsons live there now. He's getting close to retirement. They're looking at future possible to help in their retirement years, is kind of what I was told. They'll go under and I told them it's going to take, whatever the situation is, they'll have to meet the building code to have the separation to the two. But it's, to my understanding, it's not a, we've been doing this, we now need to make it right. That's, I've been told that it is for future, when retirement comes, to help offset income.
As far as the parking and, is this the flag lot kind of set up? Is that?
No, what it is, is this is the existing home. You've driven by it many times. It's a manufactured home sitting on a basement. This is a two car covered garage, so that'll meet, because in, in our zoning, you have to have one covered and one uncovered. This is an existing two car garage that they will share to meet the requirement. This pad is, is not there yet, but this is what they would have to put for the extra uncovered parking as required in our zoning. So it is a bit confusing, so I'm glad you asked, because this is just a, will be a slab, a parking pad. This is an existing two car garage. This is the over/under, the home on top with the full basement underneath. And then this is the depth of their lot. You can see, I'm trying to pull it down and not be too, so that's, that's kind of why that 4.55, they have quite a bit of backyard associated with this particular property.
Is there an outside access to the basement?
That's the only access, to my understanding. I don't think there's an interior one that would have to be closed off. But if there were, we would make sure that that, as I remember, there is just an outside. Because it is hard to put stairs down through a manufactured, you can have them made that way, but it's very hard to do that, so.
If you could just give me a little, educate me a little on this. Is this, is this a usual thing or unusual thing to come in and change zoning on just one lot existing property?
This is only the second one since I've been here asking for this particular zone, which we've had available. It's just nobody, some people don't know it's there and haven't, because it's like the question was asked, we do have situations that, we haven't gone out and found it, but we're, I don't know where they are, but we do know there's several people up in this areas. Councilman Hudson probably knows them and we won't get into that, but, that are coming back and, you know, but this will only be the second.
It seems like we have one that we approved real close.
That's why I say a half a block.
How's that one working out? Is that one going well?
It, it is. I, the cars are never out on the street. I mean, if anything, they park on the, the area. There is room right off to the, you know, they have the driveway that goes all the way back. They put in a covered parking, gravelled all the way back to it. So I really haven't, nobody's come complaining on that. And that's usually one of your signs, if it's not working, you get, people let you know it's not working. So for the most part, it sounds like everything's fine there. I drive by it, if not once a day, at least once every other day, it seems, when I'm out in my, doing my duties and stuff. And I've never had a car parked on the street at that unit. They've always been either in the driveway, in the carport, or off to the side of the driveway in a gravelled area.
With, with this zoning, does it stick with the land? Where this is a modular home, sometimes those are maybe a little bit more temporary. I know it's on a permanent foundation with the concrete basement, but let's say that ever left. Would it remain R2? Somebody could come and actually build two private dwellings in that case?
In this, because of the lot size, they could.
It's such a deep lot, so.
Yeah.
Would they have to show parking or anything else again?
They would. We'd have, they'd always have to make sure. They would. We'd have, they'd always have to make sure if they came in for a building permit to change it. We always look to make sure they got a cover, one covered and one uncovered.
But that would be abandoned, if they abandon that use for a period of time, can't?
No, unfortunately, it's a zoning, it's a zone district, so, yeah, it's not a conditional use permit, which is, I'm kind of, that's why, you know, it was, you can debate those, but we try to stay away from CUPs as much as possible and so it would stay with the property. But again, a property to have two of them on it has to have, you know, minimum size of 12,000 square feet, um, to them. So that's the, the benefit. When you're an R one six and you have 12,000, it's like, well, you have basically two 6,000 square foot lots there anyway. So you're not losing any ground and that's how, why that code is written. If you have two units, you got to have a minimum 12,000 square feet lot, so.
And this lot size is what again?
It is almost half an acre, point four four. Yeah. So you're looking, it's got to be 18, I'm thinking probably roughly 18,000 square feet.
So really in all reality, you stay with current zoning around there, you could ask for a lot split and keep two 6,000 square.
Exactly. In fact, if it's 18,000 square, you'd almost, you know, get close to three. It could be, it's somewhere between 18 and 20 because point five, we know is, is 20, what is that? Cause four, it's a 21 and a half thousand. You know, if they had over 18, they could actually do three lots, you know, according to R one six zoning, so. And that's kind of how I kind of look at that when those proposals come in. If it's, you know, if we allow for a single 6,000 square foot lot and, you know, what's the difference of having two residences on a 12,000 square foot lot, so.
Any other questions?
No, I just, I'd just like to make a statement. I, I, you know, I've been a little leery of any increasing of our densities, especially in downtown, where we've already increased things around the corner. I've really struggled with this one. Um, because it's exactly what I was afraid would happen around the corner is starting to happen with these homes is now people, instead of saying that they want to buy a house and live there, they want to buy a house to become a moneymaker. They want to turn into two moneymakers. And that's one of my concerns that I've had up there and that's for that reason I will be.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. Are there any parties interested out there that would, on that? The only one I see that would be the stranger's gym. Probably have a dog in this fight there. Okay, no other questions or comments?
That mayor did, go ahead, Councilman Turk.
I just moved that we closed the public hearing.
Okay, there's motion and a second to close the public hearing.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Hudson, aye.
Doug Miller, aye.
Turk, aye.
Thank you. We'll move to item B, consideration to approve an ordinance adopting the zone change, Z thirteen fourteen, to change presence zone from R one six to R two zone.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance adopting zone change request, Z dash thirteen dash fourteen to change presence zones from R dash one six to R dash two zone.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Hudson, aye.
Doug Miller, aye.
Turk, aye.
Okay, that passes three to two. Item eight easement, consideration to grant an easement to Interlinks Communications located at the north and the 300 east, approximately 650 north, 300 east, within the city power yard, public works director Mike Shaw.
Thank you, mayor. This is an easement that Interlinks is requesting so they can get a fiber line up to the communication, communication tower that's up in the old, uh, yard or the power yard that's existing now. Uh, we've worked with them on this easement. Uh, our, uh, public works issue that we had with that is that eventually we're going to need to build a frontage road through there. And that, that'd have to move that line at, uh, no cost to the city and they've agreed with it and we've worked through the agreement with them, so. We request that you approve this.
Is it an aerial easement or is it?
No, it'll be underground and it'll be directional board, so they won't even be trenching through the yard site.
And will it be on the backside of the property or is it on the front side?
It'll be following the fence line that follows I fifteen.
Okay.
I believe Mike, uh, just so the council's kind of aware of this, I believe we do run aerial, uh, down on this section or not?
I believe so. I believe it's aerial on 300 east.
Yeah, so come up and then go down.
Then they'll go underground.
This has been an important project for us for a long time. anxious to see Interlinks bring it most.
So is the easement location the, the hashed area on the map, Mike?
It is.
So we're just going to put it right up against the interstate line and then, seems like the location. How will, when it needs to be moved, what will be the, what will be the proposal for that?
Well, they requested that when it needs to be moved, they'll just abandon it in place that the original agreement, I think it was, that they had to remove it. But it'd be all right if they just abandoned the conduit there and, and then they'd have to replace it at another time. When we build the road, put it in the road right away.
So the road, the road at some point is, is mapped, is planned for that northern section right there, right up against?
Correct.
So the tower's going to go away if that road's there anyways?
And, and we've already been working with them on that. Tower won't go away, we'll just relocate it. And we've been working with the tower in sight that they know that they'll have to do that someday.
Okay.
And we've actually specified where we'd like them to move it to, so they're well aware they'll be moving it.
Well, uh, there's no further discussion. I'll, uh, make the motion that we grant an easement to Interlinks Communication located at the north end of 300 east at approximately 650 north, 300 east, within the city power yard.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Hudson, aye.
Doug Miller, aye.
Turk, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. We move on to nine is, uh, been tabled, so we'll move to number 10.
Actually, I think we need to make a motion to table item nine.
And, and on that, so are we tabling to have a, a closed session on that discussion or you're going to make a recommendation at the next meeting?
Right.
Very good, okay.
I will, go ahead. Motion that we table item nine, nine.
Till, uh, what is our next meeting?
Twenty, yeah.
Till January eighth.
I'll second that motion.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Hudson, aye.
Doug Miller, aye.
Turk, aye.
Thank you. Item 10, annual council business. A, consideration to approve the 2014 meeting for the city council. I guess we're assuming we're going to go to the same time and dates, second and fourth, Tuesday and Wednesday. Okay, can we approve all three of these at the same time? And the time would be six o'clock PM. Item B, consideration to approve the 2014 council member assignments. And if you have any assignments that you want to, if you want to think about it, we could work that one in the, to the next.
You might want to have that discussion after, uh, after the new council person joins, your new ranks and so you can get with him and figure out what he's most comfortable serving.
Sure, okay. And item C, consideration to elect a 2014 mayor pro temp. I'd like to recommend that, um, Councilman Turk continue for another year.
Yeah, I support that recommendation. Do you need a vote on these, mayor?
I think we do need to vote on those.
I'd like Councilman Hudson's suggestion that we allow the new council to be seated before we finalize assignments.
Sure.
So I'll just make the motion that we approve the 2014 meeting schedule as, as listed. That we approve the appointment of Councilman Turk as the 2014 mayor pro temp. And that we reconsider the 2014 council members when the 2014 council has been seated.
I can support that. I'll second the motion.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Hudson, aye.
Doug Miller, aye.
Turk, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item 11, alcohol license, consideration to give local consent to the Royal Thai Cuisine for a limited restaurant liquor license.
The Royal Thai Cuisine has actually changed ownerships. So it's the same place they had a liquor license there before. All we're doing is being, there's new owners, they have to go through the whole new process. So this is just a local consent. Um, then it has to go to the state. They'll get on the state's approval. Once they're approved, then they bring us back the information and we'll finish the paperwork. This is just to get them started.
Any questions? Any questions on that?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we give, uh, local consent to Royal Thai Cuisine for a limited restaurant liquor license.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Councilman Turk, aye.
Doug Miller, aye.
Hudson, aye.
Staley, aye.
Truman, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, 12, annexation petition, consideration of accepting or denying the petition request or annexation of North Green Springs Edition property located approximately 1400 west, 1900 north. Applicant, we need to table that one again?
No.
Okay. Screw all situational trust line.
Okay, this is, this application, um, has been sent to the county. They've reviewed it and agreed that the annexation should come to us. This is strictly just accepting the application and you giving direction for staff to proceed with the certification and the advertising and to go forward.
This is our master annexation plant. This is part of that.
This is within our master annexation plan. It's in the North Green Springs area.
So they envision that there will be some, something happening on it soon? Is that why they want to annex it in or?
I presume they do, yes. Um, I haven't gotten that far into the information. I know that they're going to be wanting a zone change when we get all the way through the public hearings and all that.
I can answer that, but yeah, they, um, planning commission has seen proposals for, uh, for some development in that area, so.
Does this go, I'm trying to figure out, how, does it go right up to the fence of the, of the, the preserve?
Yes.
Okay, so it just goes to the fence of the preserve then?
Yeah.
Everything in the preserve still, still is not.
Right.
And just to be clear on this, on this map I'm looking at, I see the 29.302 acres that were, I think is being proposed to be added. That parcel just to the right is already annexed and already zoned.
Yes.
Okay.
The zoning, I don't know, is, is the zoning done?
The zoning is R one ten.
It's in the process. It's going through planning commission, I believe.
If there's no other discussion, I will, uh, make the motion that we accept the petition request for annexation of North Green Springs Drive Edition, property located at approximately 1400 west, 1900 north. And it looks like it's approximately 29.302 acres and the tax ID is on the map.
Second the motion.
There's motion and a second.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Hudson, aye.
Doug Miller, aye.
Turk, aye.
Thank you. Item 13, special event, consideration to approve a special event to use the ball fields for fireworks display on New Year's Eve family baths. Applicant Washington City Community Center.
Is this, uh, is this the first time we've done this one? I know we've done.
I think so.
Yeah, I don't believe we've done fireworks on the Fourth of Jul, uh, Fourth of July, on New Year's Eve before. And so that's why I've requested that the community center bring it for approval because it's, there's noise and.
Is this, they're lighting off at midnight?
I believe so. And according to our code.
I already get enough complaints.
Yeah.
At ten. Can't imagine at midnight. I won't even, I, I won't even get the complaints anymore either.
One thing about oftentimes for New Year's, most, a lot of people stay up and bring in that new year, so, so it isn't like the Fourth of July that some people have gone to bed by then. Hopefully, most of the neighbors have stayed up to celebrate it and would enjoy seeing some fireworks as part of it.
We know how long it's going to be.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't believe it's going to be very long, but I couldn't tell you.
Ten minutes?
About ten minutes.
Is it, the setup going to be similar to the way we set it up? So it'll be closing off roads and?
I believe so, because they said it's going to be exactly the same way they do at Cotton Days or the 24th of July.
Chief, can I ask you a question? I know when we did, when we do the 24th, we get an inordinate amount of traffic into our city during that time and it becomes kind of a bottleneck. Do we have, we have concerns with that happening with this and trying to get people out smoothly and?
Well, there's no plan in place to provide any traffic control. We don't expect the same type of event based on the community center. They've got a party there that's already a family event. I think they're planning on them being the majority of the people that go there to see the fireworks. Um, I don't know how well publicized it's been, maybe, maybe you guys do, but.
It's fairly well.
It's definitely, you're definitely going to have people that are out and about parked, um, which brings a whole new element on New Year's Eve.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway, we'll deal with it.
Cool. Do you have concerns with this?
Be honest.
No, we're fine. We're fine with it.
I'm struggling with.
His tongue's bleeding. He bit us so hard.
I'm struggling with the, with the timing of them. And then the neighborhoods are around there. I think New Year's at midnight is going to be, there'll be more complaints about that than there is Fourth of July at ten.
I think it'll be a shock. Some of those, I could just picture an old couple not expecting fireworks above their park model.
Is there any way to notify people that warn them if we're going to do it?
We have a phone thing we could.
I just.
Did you get that, Maury?
You know what, if, if, if we have that concern, I know that, that last year when the youth, youth council did their dance.
Yeah.
Part, part of the agreement with them holding that was that they did notify the neighbors for, I think it was three blocks in all directions around. They, they took it door to door and maybe we could require the same thing of this group if, if you feel that, that's, that's appropriate, that we can just say, look, part of, part of us allowing the special event is notification of that area.
My issue with that is just. Share poker ourselves. We're in the academy. Here's your last event you celebrated and I wake up to his neighbors. I wake up, his neighbors are banging their pots on the sidewalk. It will be interesting, I think, if this was quite a lot of it. Would this be a real complaint petition? I don't know.
Well, you know, I also look at the other side of it. It, it could possibly catch on and become kind of a nice tradition and where people come to the community center party and watch the fireworks to bring in the new year. And frankly, people need some things to do to stay out of, at least we're containing the, 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 the party and the, the trouble, right, chief? Bring, bring them all, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe it'll reduce the discharge of unlawful firearms.
True.
So this, this would be a one-time approval. This wouldn't be a, okay.
Then we ought to consider bringing back the cannon at six o'clock in the morning on the Fourth, right?
I think you ought to do it anyway. I'll help you light it, mayor.
We will follow up with you. We'll follow up with the council after this is done and if we, we'll let you know kind of what we are hearing back from the community. I think that's a fair question.
What is the cost? How much are the fireworks going to cost us?
It's not.
Is it already budgeted or?
It's not part, it's not our cost at all. It's a private event.
Oh, this is, this is a private, uh?
It's a private.
Okay, so we're not paying for the fireworks?
No. I think they're getting them in Wappa Valley on the way back. I do, I like the idea of noticing the, the immediate neighbors around it, um, and so I don't know what that distance would be.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't solve the problem, but at least lets them know so they're not surprised.
Sure. Cause I can imagine some people being surprised.
I would like to talk to you about what you're courting me on because I kind of miss some of that.
Well, you'll see in the morning.
I felt this pretty. I thought, I gotta find the D U S and B U Q U.
Next thing we'll get into censoring. He'll be right. We want to censor this.
I've never had a problem with that at all.
So as far as distances, as far as noticing.
A block?
It's tough.
Let's call it the immediate neighborhood.
There's neighborhood though, all four directions really.
Yeah, but the ones are pretty well shielded to the north and to the west.
I don't think you need to go over.
I would see need to go to the west even. Uh, I'd be more neighborhood to the east and to the south. Because you got the, you got the community center and your school that, those to the north are pretty well shielded there. Uh, to the west, you got the ball fields. You're down to 300 north, basically. So you've got a pretty good buffer there.
I don't know.
It's, it's the trailer, trailers to the south and immediate neighbors to the, to the east. It's really, you're going to take the impact.
I live, I live five, you know, how far away do I live? Five blocks away and I can tell you that it's loud at my house.
Well, I hear St. George's at my house, but you know what? I, I used to go out and be able to watch them until the neighbor's tree grew up, so.
Staying those trees.
They asked, I said, they'll top you up blocking views.
Maybe just banner or something like that. I just, I feel bad for people that, if they don't know what's going to happen and suddenly they're living right underneath it and it starts going off like that. That's my concern.
Is that a motion, Councilman Hudson, to approve this? I'll make the motion if we approve the special event to use the ball fields for fireworks display for the New Year, New Year's Eve Family Fest with judgment on notification to neighbors left to the community center.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Hudson, aye.
Sagan Miller, aye.
Turk, aye.
All right. Thank you, that passes forward one.
Chief, does the state, does the state statute now let people shoot fireworks up? Some individuals, they don't, do they?
Just a portion. No, I think they let them do it during, on the first.
There's a lot of people doing it.
I think they do.
And even more after Councilman Truman.
I think the new law allows it on the January first.
Well, they do it in Vegas, we can do it here. All right, let's go to our report from assigned committee. Any, anything to report?
I can just give an update. We had the budget open, public meeting for the Southwest Mosquito Abatement District. The new budget got approved. We're still looking for a new district manager because we want a new manager there. Find somebody before start the board.
Anything else? Anything?
Just a report from our flood control committee. We had the same opportunity, partly because we're, we run our funds through the county and their, their year runs from January to, through December. And so we've been through that budgeting process as well for, for 2014. And our flood control authority budget was also approved and has been submitted to the state. Also, just, we had an MPO meeting yesterday. I know that Mike was in Richfield today with D O, with the DOT. UDOT, I don't know how his, his, he can report on his meeting, how it went up there. But just, it sounds like they are kind of fast-tracking, at least the planning process and the study of the underpass under the freeway on Mall Drive. That's obviously kind of coming to the forefront with, with the situations of our, of our intersection out here on Exit Ten. So there was some discussion with that. They also, we updated the, the tip funding and we were, remind me, Mike, I actually left my paperwork out in the truck. What we received, what was it for? I know it was Mike's lease, oh, it was out to the purgatory. We are on the stip list for out to, or the tip list for out to our purgatory connection into the bridge. And, and Mike opened the can of worms with that, with our county commissioner to tell him we were coming down the easement. And he said, you're going to have to kill a couple of us first. Mike said, Mike said, easy enough done. Oh, anyway. Quote him on that, will you? Anyway, but we, we finally agreed that there would be some further discussion, but we, we are tentatively got some, some funding in for that connection coming down and, and there. So, anyway, that was kind of our, our MPO discussion.
Anything else, gentlemen? City manager report?
I just have a couple of things I'll just update you on. From our local flood control committee, meaning this room, just to update you, we, we've had our insurance company here and so they've, we've also done some moisture testing in the walls and other things and we think we're actually in pretty good shape. More than likely, our molding will come completely off and bring that, take that molding completely down. The sizing will be an issue, but they've actually approved for the sizing to be replaced in the whole room only because it's difficult to match. We don't need to, we won't, but if we need to, they've, they've approved that. We're still debating on the carpet. And then, of course, as you know, we had flooding in that hallway as well as the three offices over there. Mine, mine wasn't so bad, the mayor's was pretty significant and then some of the impurities off the well. And then I, I believe the fire extinguishers are back on. Oh, in the basement, yes, thank you. As a matter of fact, on the basement, I've been thinking a lot about, I talked to our insurance company on that with regards to the basement ceiling. Do basement ceiling is something different than the sheet rock. Because that has not only our records in that room, but also we have the server room. And so, of course, they'll just pay for the replacement of the sheet rock, but it might be worth us looking at a different treatment on the ceiling. But at least if that flood occurs again, which is probably a fire extinguisher, fire sprinklers, and it can drain to a certain point and down without covering everything. So we're going to be talking about the basement. The basement's one that I think we ought to spend a little time with because it is so important to us, both from a record and a server standpoint. And if we can't do that, at least maybe doing some additional treatments inside the server room on the ceiling. So that we don't have those problems there. But I know that the records, we haven't done an assessment yet on the loss of any records, have we Denise? Okay, and so we're going to meet tomorrow. There's, yeah, there's a, there's a.
We've got some fans down there.
We'll be meeting tomorrow and going over kind of what, what we, where we think we need to go on that. So just to keep you updated on that. Then you're all aware of the January eighth ribbon cutting on the southern corridor and that's been kind of a little bit of a mess. And so I guess the only other, yeah, I guess that's probably it.
Did the insurance company say anything about, you got Nike hoodie in mind?
When you mocked up the. So other than just questions, I think that's probably the big ideas I would just.
Did, did the water just come, so it was frozen pipes from, to the sprinkler heads? Did it just come right down through the sprinkler? Just the sprinkler heads? Just the one?
Yeah. And it was, it was blowing out, I mean, it was blowing out, far enough into the chandeliers there.
The lights were full of water. Did it get noticed fairly quickly or?
Oh, yeah.
It was noticed soon?
Yeah, the alarm, the alarm.
That'll help it notice.
I admit, I admit it's not that somebody had probably had a gun in here somewhere. So that was the initial check and then it seemed like it must be fired because the fire alarm. Finally opened the door and it was just blowing through here. So we shut the main off really fast. Problem is there's a lot of water already in the system.
And what we didn't realize is that when we shut the main off, we also have a pressure relief that didn't get in. So it kind of drained the system out, which if you hit pressure. It was an interesting event because as you know, we built the city facility in such a way that it's a pretty good standalone facility. We got Generation out here, but we suffered a Fukushima event. The Generation couldn't be ran because it ran into our panels and it. So we had to shut the building down. A good, probably eighteen hours to let the electrical panels. So we've learned a few things. As a matter of fact, one of the things I'll be talking about too is because part of that came through is our floor boxes. I do think there's some improvements we can make in our floor boxes too. Because if you actually see how those are constructed, it's no surprise that a lot of water went in there and then ran into the electrical panels. And I think we can make some changes there. So we learned some things. We also learned some things, we'll, we'll role-play a little bit of staff too on how certain things probably aren't going to work. So anyway.
Thank you.
I was going to say, just, we had a very similar event like that in the, in the YSA State Center. Same thing, we had a sprinkler like freeze, just like that last Wednesday. Flood, flood the building down there. It's kind of interesting.
Thank you, thank you. We'll move on to I am sixteen finance, but before we move on to that, I'm going to turn that over to Councilman Turk and Councilman Staley. But I'm involved in another organization that Santa Claus is going to show up and I've got to go do that, so. So thank you, gentlemen. Merry Christmas to you, Bill. I really enjoyed working with you and Garth. We look forward to working with you in the future. And I hope that you, all of your 2014 is fabulous and you have a wonderful 2014 and we look forward to some great times here. Staff, you too, Merry Christmas to all of you.
It's going to be so good, Mayor. We're going to start the year off fireworks, sounds like sound. Well, I appreciate the mayor putting this on the agenda. As you recall, I sent out an email last week. Last year at budget time, we, we had talked about the possibility of coming back the first year and re-looking at where revenues were at and the ability to, to go forward with proposed pay increases for some employees. And also for some proposal of new personnel. And so that's kind of what Councilman Staley and myself, I've worked with staff a little bit on where we were at, what we were looking at and, and some proposals and costs involved there. And that's kind of what I shot out to you last week. And one of the things that, that we had Ruth do is actually include all the costs. So what you're seeing there is total, this, this includes retirement, FICA, everything basically, total costs of payroll through doing that. So anyway, you can see what our 2013 fund balance increase was to the budget, which basically for 2014's budget, we started off at about two, almost two point six million, which is basically twenty-five percent of our, of our general fund, which is basically what's allowed by state law now. And so we've, we've worked with Kerry a little bit and his, his projection of revenues for this year is a, basically another eight hundred and twenty-five thousand surplus. Obviously, in our budget, we included about eleven thousand dollars of that in our budget that we were going to use fund balance for. So our projection basically is about eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars surplus for, for 2014. And so that's kind of what we're looking at as far as, as revenue forecasting. And then, of course, the proposed pay increases are what you're seeing there. Basically, our proposal is that we would take and, and catch those employees up since the pay freeze. So those that have been, that were hired four years ago that haven't had any increases, basically would be caught up to their hundred percent comp ratio. And vice versa, it'd come down by year of service, basically to where they would have been on the comp ratio had we been able to give those raises accordingly. So we also, as part of that, kind of shuffled around and re-looked at the allocations of some of our general fund and how they were being allocated. And if there's any questions with that, we could have Roger or we can talk about that. But ultimately, we got looking and said, you know, why, why should the general fund be funding some of our revenue funds similar to like our, what is it? Councilman Staley? Oh, the collection girls up front.
Oh, yeah, the clerks.
The clerks, utility department. I mean, ultimately, what they're collecting is for the power, the water, the sewer, the garbage. Those are revenue funds that, that they're all overseeing, but yet the general fund's paying for them. And we're saying, why should the general fund, fund pay for revenue fund personnel? And so that's kind of what we've looked at is that reallocation, reallocating those things there. And so with reallocation of the general fund, re-looking at those, basically the proposal is, as you have seen, that the cost of the general fund would be about a hundred and, almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to give those raises that we're proposing. Of course, the proprietary funds would be about three hundred and seventy, almost three hundred and seventy-two thousand to the proprietary funds because that's where most of our personnel are.
And that, that was one thing that I kind of, kind of wrapped my head around too, is, is we have the growth that we've had over the last several years and continue to have. We're providing more services in our water department, in our sewer department, power department. So our clerks and the employees that are working in these departments are servicing more and more people. So I, I didn't have a lot of heartburn with allocating some of that cost to those proprietary funds. I mean, obviously, we're collecting more from those, from those areas based, just based on the growth and services that they're using, so.
Any questions as far as pay increases?
I've never quite understood completely the, you start at a certain level, you get a hundred percent, then you get up above a hundred percent in the pay. And who does the studies, how do those figures determine? They look at the private sector and say, okay, people in the private sector in similar capacities, is the city making more or less? You can do that. I guess I may just think about the citizens out there. I don't know if we really turn the corner on the difficult times we're in and their pay probably hasn't gone up.
Correct. Yeah, and, and our proposal is, is that we don't go above a hundred percent. Basically, those that are, that are at a hundred percent would, would get a two percent, just a two percent pay increase. And so basically, the comp ratio would only, would cap at a hundred percent.
And I, and, and all of these, at least in our discussions with human resources and together, obviously, I want to bring this back to, to our fellow council members here. But this would all be prerequisiteed on a favorable employee review.
Correct.
So it's.
Or the numbers that I see there, just assuming that everybody's favorable? Or is that assuming?
Well, yeah, I think that Ruth, as she went through and looked at, I mean, obviously, those reviews have been ongoing. And so she was able to look at those reviews, yes, that would, that is, that's what we're seeing there. It was interesting to me because I did a little more research on, on what is a favorable review. I know when talking with a couple of council members and I was in very much agreement with them that said, look, just because you show up and you're dressed and you show up on time, is that a favorable review? And should you be given a, a pay raise simply because you, because you, you breathed and walked and you were dressed and showed up on time? And so in discussion of, of what is, what constitutes a favorable or a three on a review is basically every year, each of those employees set goals with their department head. And if they achieve those goals through the year, then they're given, that qualifies as a four or a three. And so there is a growth process that is required of them to get a favorable review, which, which helped me because I thought, okay, you know, we pay them just to show up and breathe another year. And obviously, that's not the case.
Now that we're talking the 2014 budget, just for the clarification, this is the 2013 ending in 2014 budget, correct?
Correct, it would be, yes.
And then the, the costs that have been cited to the general fund and proprietary fund would just be for the remainder of that budget year?
Actually, this is, is.
Or is it?
Yeah, it's a full year is what you're looking at. So you're looking at half of this for the rest of this year. What we wanted to look at, say, is this, is this something that's sustainable going forward? I mean, we can't just give a raise for six months and they say, whoops, it's not sustainable anymore, we got to fall back now. And so what they've given us is a full year. So you're looking at what 2014 would cost you, cut that in half for the remainder of 2013.
So we're, we're going to pay back pay also?
No. No.
It's implemented if it gets passed, right?
Correct, it's implemented as January and January's, beginning January paycheck, so you've got six months basically.
Halfway through the fiscal year.
Going forward, so you'd be half of this for 2013. But we want to show you what 2014 is going to cost you to say, hey, is it sustainable going forward from here on now?
So that's twelve months worth of.
Correct. What you're seeing there is what 2014's full budget would have to cover. Half of that will, of course, be adjusted, we'll have to do a adjustment for 2013 for half of that. Then we're also, as we showed you, some proposed, actually, new hires. We've have some of our departments that obviously are, are struggling and some of those we've talked about, obviously, our police department. Where we, we've got a huge problem over there, which has been discussed. Anyway, what we showed you is a proposal of what we would like to, to add beginning January as well. And that would be obviously a community development, another inspector. They're looking at right now, based upon numbers, about six hundred building permits this year. So they're, they're stretched pretty thin there.
Has there been any discussion, the, the idea that I had, instead of hiring somebody, that we look at maybe outsourcing that so it's easier to pull back if we need to?
Yeah, certainly, and I think that has been part of the discussion and part of that would be looked at as this payroll. If, if we say, look, we, you know.
Allocate this amount.
We've got, yeah, we've got the funds there, whether we hire somebody or whether we, we outsource it.
I actually think that's a pretty good idea to look at the outsourcing, obviously lean on, on, on what you think. But, but if the, if the growth that we're currently experiencing doesn't continue, then that puts, puts both the city and the employee in a tough situation. So I think Councilman Hudson makes a good point there.
Correct.
Councilman Turk, on the footnote for the police officer, trying to understand what that, what that's saying.
We, we have a, if you go up into the, where we talk about anticipated future expenditures, we, we have obtained a cops grant, which basically will fund a police officer over a course of, what is it, four years? Kind of, they kind of graduate them into your, into your payroll.
So that footnote is.
That footnote just shows basically.
The city's portion of that.
Correct, correct.
So for instance, the ninety-seven, the ninety-seven fifty-six that you'll send to the police officers for the two, we are fully paying for two full police officers we hire.
So that ninety-seven is for just one year or for the four, the four year?
What we're showing you is, yeah, we're showing you a full year.
Using the cops grant as part of that, so obviously it's going to grow.
Then it would grow when we show you those growth numbers, our councilman's showing you those growth numbers below into the end. Then it would grow, and we show you those growth numbers, Councilman's showing you those growth numbers below into the anticipated future expenditure section.
So you're going to grow by 18,000, basically, in 2015. 2016's another 30,000, so it continues to, as the COPS grant phases out, you phase in. And then obviously, our firefighter safer grant runs out at the end of 2015. Partially, partially runs out in 2015, and we fully pick it up in 2016, which is that another $250,000 that we're going to pick up.
We think we can do all that, plus build a $3 million police station and everything else that we've got.
Yeah, yeah, obviously, that police station, we had that discussion. And our feeling is that part of that, more than likely, we're going to have to go out to bond for at least a portion of that.
And the debt service on that, Councilman Truman, if we did bond for all or a portion of that, what we've anticipated is about $86,000 a year would be the general fund.
Is there a committee meeting that's discussing all this? Is that, or is that just?
We actually, we met, and we met with Ruth on payroll, and we met with the manager.
Yeah, I'll tell you how it came to be. We were riding in the, what parade were we in, Mayor?
Probably the Veterans Parade.
The Veterans Parade, and we said, hey, is there any discussion about what we talked about, about pay increases? And I said, we have it, and he said, well, maybe we ought to pick it up. And so, of course, we asked, we called for a meeting with Roger and with Ruth, just to say, hey, what are the funds like? Is it even something we can discuss? And so we told them that we had a desire to bring this to the council and look at it if the revenues were there. And so they came back, we had one more meeting where they brought back what you're seeing here, basically, the revenues, the expenditures. Because we said, we want to see all the, we don't just say, hey, here's salary, but all of a sudden, now you've got FICA, you've got retirement. We want to see the whole picture, so there's no surprises here. And so Ruth came prepared with that. And so basically, what amounted to council is, we had two meetings, what I call that. Sure.
I guess, you know, I have no doubt that our city employees worked hard, they take on added jobs, they do, perform well in what they do. I still, I'm still just concerned if, is the city leading the way with increasing salaries when everybody else is still living in a very tight, constrained budget? You know, and not that it's not deserved, I just don't know if we're.
Well, I can tell you, as far as cities go in Southern Utah, we are the only one that did not give our employees an increase this year. Every other city gave increases. And the county just.
The headlines of the county rates.
The county has given increases now. So our employees, basically, have been four and a half years with no increases. Last year, St. George City did give some increases. This year, Hurricane followed, while every other city basically followed this year with increases. And so to answer the one question that you had with the consultant that comes back, they don't look at the private sector. He compares this with other cities throughout the state that are close to our size, and then compares the salaries of what they're paying. Obviously, the private sector comes into play if some cities are out there going rogue and saying, hey, we want certain employees, so we have to raise, because all of a sudden, that comes back into our ratio.
And I still, you know, it's more of a fundamental issue I have with government overall. You have the federal government, that they vote themselves out of participating in health plans, the rest of people have to participate in. They have better benefits than society has in general.
Correct.
Government almost has become an elite thing. Everybody wants to work in government, not the private sector, that's where all the money and the benefits are, you know? So it's, is it the right thing to do? I don't know.
I don't, it's a good question, certainly is. I know that oftentimes, the discussion that I have, even prior to coming on the council, is I work very closely with several of the cities, especially their water and sewer departments in my line of work. And oftentimes, I would tell them, look, you guys, because they would often complain about their pay, but I would say, look, isn't this, you know, you have a retirement plan, and you've got a health insurance plan that the rest of us don't have. And so oftentimes, that's what you would, in fact, I used to tell my wife, who works for the school district, I don't care whether they pay you, you are my retirement and you're my health insurance. And so that certainly has always been kind of the quasi-understanding of government, you work for less money because you have a better package, if you want to call it that, which kind of balanced the scales out compared to the private sector. But I also look at, because some of my thoughts have been, as I've expressed with this council, privatizing some things. I found it very interesting, the Northern Utah city who had gone out and contracted private snow removal. And when the storm hit, it was very interesting to see what happened with that. It's like, hmm, kind of nice to control your own destiny when some of those issues arrive.
Control it before, they contracted it to the county before. They didn't do it themselves.
I don't know what'll happen, but I found very interesting is when it went private. It was kind of an eye-opener to me, because I would have thought private service or sector would always give you better service.
Well, I think it's interesting too to note that a big portion of this pay adjustment that we're talking about, it has to do with probably more of the lower pay grades that are full-time workers. And a lot of these are good employees who have been here, you know, four, five, six years, and really haven't got up to that 100% comp ratio, which is kind of the, hey, you're competent to do your job. And they've stuck with us. So to me, that's really the bulk of this measure, is getting the, you know, the police officers and the guys in public works. And a lot of these guys are just at 85 or 90% up to a little way, so.
I still have a little question on the police officer lineup, I want to make sure I understand it. Is that 97056, is that the cost of two officers or the cost of one?
And full year or half year? That's a full year.
About one point. Because we graduated in with that, with that second officer. He's the one that subsides, so you've got one full, one.
That helps me understand better, I was.
I'm sorry, that's. My, you know, as we talk about this, the fact that we have a fund balance, I, it worries me that we want to allocate all of it. And I don't, and I realize you're not doing that, but I think we need to be very careful. So we have some big road projects that are in the future, as you look out at the growth out in the fields, that really concern me, that if the funds aren't allocated, where that's going to come from. So I think we've got to be very careful.
Yeah, the thing I look at is, basically, if you hold that 25%, we wouldn't touch fund balance. You've got about 814,000, of which you're talking about allocating almost 300,000. So you've still got $500,000 that's sitting out there to be allocated somewhere.
Doesn't some of that 500 come in on these new hires?
No. Yeah, that's taken into, you've got 142, almost 143,000 on new hires, and about 150,000 on pay adjustments. So you're about 300,000, so.
And, you know, in our discussions, it was interesting, I did talk with. Kerry, or Treasurer Kerry, help me with his last name.
Kerry Eli.
Will Wright. Kerry Will Wright. Had an interesting observation that was relayed. You know, we talk about the economy, and we wonder if it's improving or not. And I don't know how much it's improving, but I can tell you Washington City's growing. And his assumption is that with the growth, we see more of our own citizens shopping in Washington City. And so as that happens, then there is the tax revenue to cautiously and prudently move forward and take care of the employees while being in a position to take care of future obligations. So I think it's, I don't think it's, it's out of line.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing it up, because that was one of the questions we asked, is what's all of a sudden, you know, 700,000 or 800,000? Why all of a sudden, we see in these growth numbers? And he said, it's easy enough for me, look at your building permits. He said, you're putting rooftops in here that are now added to your tax base that's shopping in your stores. And I said, oh, you have a point.
We have the highest sales tax collection here in Washington City, and it's still not quite making space. So this is the question I had, I always thought it was consumer confidence, which I think is improving. Yes, it's just shopping, the population shopping.
Just got new credit cards.
Yeah, I love your credit card story. So anyway, that's our new hire proposal. And then, I don't know, I didn't, did I get, I didn't put it on here. One other proposal is, that we had, is there's about, we had budgeted $10,000 for our Christmas party. We would like to propose that that $10,000 is taken and split across with our, some of our part-time employees, our more pertinent part-time employees. We thought that that probably would be better left to the department heads. We looked at our, some of our part-time firefighters. We've got some part-time people at the community center that almost function as full-time people, other than the 25 hours.
Like as a bonus, or as?
Yeah, this is a bonus, correct. Just, you know, one shot, basically, there's $10,000, depending on however many people are decided by those department heads. They just split that anywhere from $50 to 100, you know, depending on how. We've looked at our parks department, has some part-time people that fall into that. So we didn't feel like we wanted to spread it to every part-time employee, because then all of a sudden, you start talking officials that, you know, that officiate soccer games and volleyball games. Yeah, we're looking at more of the key employees, like I said, our firefighters. There's a few in the parks department, predominantly our community center people. So that's kind of basically the three departments, we felt. Now, there's one down in public works that we discussed as well. So that's kind of the proposals. I don't know, discussion-wise, or?
Councilman Turk and Staley, thanks for your work on this. I would just make the motion that we approve the adjustments and the hires as recommended. I know the hires were considered in the budget, decided to pull off on them, so I would just make the motion that we.
You have a motion by Councilman Seg Miller?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Hudson?
I'll vote to approve it, but I want to make the notation that it's based on the information that you guys have done in your diligent study. Hopefully, those figures are accurate and your forecasts are accurate. I don't want to be all of a sudden finding out we're short of funds in two years and we don't get it.
Yeah, I hope that doesn't, I hope that doesn't happen either. I wouldn't anticipate it, because I felt like we did some pretty due diligence with this, I appreciate that.
It's just hard to unring the bell.
Yeah, I hear you.
Well, and I do want to, working with numbers every day, I do want to let you know that we did our very best on these numbers. So, I mean, there's no doubt for forecasting, there's no doubt we're looking at, but we always look at it fairly conservative. We know we've always worked with very conservative councils. And a lot of things could happen, of course, but we did our very best to try to make these very honest and accurate. And so I just have to say that, because I also don't want these two council members, you know, down the road, if, you know, we miss a number here or there, because again, it's just, it's based upon still moving things.
Well, it's obvious, I mean, I know the council members were involved a lot, but it's pretty clear the staff is the driving force.
Yeah, we don't know those numbers, obviously, we had to rely on them.
It's obvious that Roger's been really involved here. So I don't think it'd be fair to say that regardless of what happens in the future, it comes back to Councilman Turk.
Yeah, certainly, we did, we looked at staff, because ultimately, that's, yeah, exactly. That's one thing we ask, is this sustainable?
I apologize, but I have to leave, I have a concert.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and finish the vote there. Councilman Staley?
Staley, aye.
Hudson, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
Turk, aye. Thank you.
Hey, as you leave, Councilman Hudson, I think I speak for all of us. It's just been an honor. I know personally, I mean, you've taken me under wing from kind of day one, and I've learned a lot from you. I've appreciated the diligent time and effort and study you put into each and every issue. And I appreciate the way that you always vote your conscience, vote your mind. And I just think there are a number of fronts where your legacy will live on in this council. And I just want to give you a heartfelt thank you.
Amen, thank you as well.
And Councilman, on behalf of staff too, I don't necessarily like these public love fest, but we'll spend some time between now and the end of the year as well. On behalf of staff, I appreciate your guidance and direction you've always given staff as well, and so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Councilman Hudson. With nothing else on the agenda, I'll take a motion for an adjournment. Got a motion by Councilman Seg Miller?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Truman to adjourn.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Hudson, aye, and Turk, aye. We're adjourned.